We'll begin the village board meeting with a pledge to the flag. Everybody back there. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. To begin the meeting, we need the motion for the approval of a village board meeting minutes from September 15th, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
Any additions or corrections?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Not hearing any negative votes? It's approved. Now it's time for public comment. If you would like to make a comment, please come forward to the mic. Give us your name, your address, and your comment. And keep it to less than a half an hour.
Well, my name is Sally. I live on Mechanic Street. My comment is I am against the rezoning of the Philip Street, Oneida Street apartment area.
19 Philip Street is the address.
Right, but they're wanting to open Pine Street.
Right.
So that would become like a little kind of road as opposed to the short road it is now.
Thank you.
For the record.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, everybody. My name's Jason. I live at 22 Spur Street. It's the corner lot. So I'm right on East Oneida. And every day I can see as far, you know, as far as I can see up my street past the stop sign, it's stacked with cars and buses all the way through to the high school. I can barely get on my driveway as it is, so I have some traffic concerns about that to be adding that many vehicles without really addressing the side streets or any of the lights or anything like that. The second thing is there's already a problem with the drainage down the whole hill. And, uh, excuse me. Sorry. That lake very well functions as it is, and that place is going to kick off an estimated like 200,000 gallons per inch. So I think all that needs to be addressed before we go stacking a bunch of new apartments.
I believe all those issues are on...
Well, that's part of the engineering process. That's right. But absolutely, that's a concern.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Come on down.
I'm at 70 East Oneida Street. And I was actually just planning catch-up because I've had a lot of life. And so I was just reading the minutes from, I think it was 8:20 something, you know, for the planning board. And at the end, it said that they had recommended in the second that they, you know, change it to a PDD. Correct?
Instead of an R2, they wanted to entertain the... The planning board and our village council thought it would be a better process to use a PDD so that they can put better oversight on the property.
So that's actually what I... Can you help enlighten? What... I mean, I know you can change that pack. So there's different things that you can control. Of all the concerns that are the many, many, many concerns that have come forward, what is the PDD actually going to do to help our concerns? Because I want to see, am I actually against a PDD? Or is this addressing what I'm... And I'm in favor? Because I'm just trying to understand how that helps us.
Until there's, until there's a site plan to look at, you know, right now, the developer says they want to do 70 units instead of 140, but that's only half the property. What the village planning board is doing right now is looking at parameters to place on that property, no matter what is there. No commercial at all, residential only, but if it is going to be residential, they want to look at setbacks, drainage, parking, the alignment of streets, buildings, building heights, buffering with trees, fences.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. I mean, the whole nine yards, parking. Housing density is something that can be controlled with a PDD. So if they want 140, but traffic becomes an issue, then maybe the planning board has to look at fewer apartments. If it, you know, that's, that's the road it goes.
The way it goes.
So, I mean, that's why the PDD is better than an R2, because an R2 just allows...
It's a zoning code of its own.
Right. It's a zoning code of its own, and it allows lesser setbacks, lesser side yards, possibly more density. So different, you know, it just, this gives the village more control of the site.
Does it also allow the village to control the... I mean, because they cited, you know, John Mannion and Magnerelli have all said, "We need more, you know, housing for disabled," which I think is a great thing.
Sure.
Can that be like in perpetuity, instead of, "Hey, we're going to, you know, Trojan horse the best, and four years later, it's out the window, we're just going to..."
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, we did have a, an apartment complex on the south side of the village that was built as senior apartments. Once it got sold, it was open to whomever, and the residents that were there were pretty upset about it.
Yeah.
So they had, you know, some of them had found other places to live, so...
Hey, Bob could make a comment. If the PDD defines it specifically...
Yes, you could. We, we have one, we have another one that limits, that's also before the planning board, on the uses that could take place within, inside the PDD.
And that's in, and even if it changes owners, that goes with the PDD, goes with the property.
Part of those. That's, that's, I mean, some of those things are things that, I mean, if it's going forward, I'd like to see it. But at the same point, you know, I'm just trying to understand the process.
Right.
So that's, so before that committee, it's going to be a little while before, before the...
Yes.
I appreciate all the information. Thank you.
Just want to be clear, too, that the PDD is not being approved, right? It's just been recommended that that's the direct developers to call, and we still have to decide whether to accept them or not.
And also the regulations that should be set up within the planned development district, because you don't just zone something, planned development district, and walk away. It's, it's got to be planned, and as a result, there needs to be restrictions in the legislation, just like we have in, we have redone some of the other planned development districts that are now in our code.
And through the whole process, wherever it goes, whatever is recommended, eventually it would come back to this body.
Yes.
For a yea or a nay.
Right, because it's legislation.
Yeah.
Does it go back out to the public, like the last public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So I just didn't want to see it slide right past us all.
It won't do that.
Not Sally, that's your option.
The planning, the planning board itself would call for a public hearing before they would make a recommendation to this board, and then this board, because it's a change in local law, they have to have a public hearing and give the public, you know, opportunity to see what's happening and give input, so.
Thank you. All right. Come on up. I was afraid you weren't going to.
Well, I didn't find out about this till today. I guess I live on the Rock, 67 East Oneida Street, West Wickup. Sorry, what's your name, sir? Wesley Witka.
Thank you.
And I've lived here about 17 years. My wife is a ham. She's been here forever. But the idea of more housing in this town that I've grown to love is something else. We can hardly squeeze anything else. Every piece of property is, we're squeezing out housing for it, and the traffic is just unbelievable. I live, I see the school traffic every day stopping in front of my house, and I couldn't get out of my driveway if I wanted to unless someone's nice, and some of them are nice because the traffic backs up for the school, let alone another 100 cars, you know, seven unit apartments. Friday nights, you can't get anywhere in town, so we can, there's just nowhere for these cars to go except right through the village and slow us down. So just finding out about this, I'm trusting that you guys are hearing us, hearing our concerns, and are going to move forward with that and back us up. Thank you.
Stay on top of us, Wes.
Thanks, Wes.
Anyone else? Kids?
Oh, no. Ah. Then why don't you see the football game?
Moving along to trustees' comments. We'll start with Eric.
I'll stick to the agenda tonight.
I suppose I'm supposed to use your last names.
That's fine.
Trustee Shepherd.
Trustee Shepherd's mixed with the agenda.
I need to call an executive session for a personnel matter.
Was that a personnel matter?
Personnel, not personal. Personnel. That's it. Thank you.
And as a trustee, I will stick to the agenda.
I will stick with the agenda, too.
I'll stick with the agenda.
No public service announcements?
Well, I don't know. Aaron Judge hit 62. I'm the sports guy apparently on this broadcast. I'll stick to the agenda.
Moving on to the mayor.
Yes, I do have a couple things. The Christmas Bureau has started, are getting prepared to hear a few families that are requesting help for Christmas. It'll be on November 4th, 5th, 8th, and 9th. I would check the volunteer center website, Facebook site for times and phone numbers if you need to call. But it's a, it's a huge event, and they like to make sure they get it scheduled early also, everybody that needs help gets help. Just in case you haven't heard or seen along the river, the carp tournament is in progress. This is the last warm-up before the World Carp Classic comes here next day. And anybody is more than welcome to wander down Meadows Street along the trail, all the way to Community Park. There's more fishermen down by the Elks Club along the river, and actually some on, on the Double Lake. So they'll be there, they'll be fishing through Saturday. Kind of fun to watch people fish for carp. It's a little different. Let's see, a lot of Halloween stuff coming up. October 22nd is a busy day. Window painting. Any questions on the window painting of businesses? Check with Tom Life, Sandra Parks &amp; Rec. There's a trick-or-treat at the businesses. If you want details on that, check with the Chamber of Commerce. And there's an event that afternoon, evening, an Oktoberfest type of thing, very similar to the Margarita Fest, where you wander around from restaurant to restaurant, and they have a treat, whatever special for Oktoberfest, and it's a fundraiser for an event that sponsors trips for language classes and that type of stuff. So that's interesting on the 22nd. And then 31st of October, which is a Monday, is trick-or-treat for the village from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. Please, if you're sending your kids out, if there's people with no lights on in front of their house, don't go to the door. They're clearly not participating, and just encourage everybody to drive a little slower that night if you happen to be out on the streets of the village. Slippery lane, hard-to-sea kids, be careful. Interesting 5K run scheduled for the village. I think it's going to start at the square, probably run down to Community Park and back, sponsored by Mike Samarise Group. It's a booze and brews 5K with a fundraiser for Meals on Wheels. Saw a picture today on the Candlewick site that there's some kind of a critter running around. It looks like a, it might be a coyote, just so people are aware, little pets, be careful. And I need to schedule an executive session for potential litigation. Item F.
Item F. Would that be all?
That's it.
Okay. I didn't want to shut off.
That's fine.
Okay. Moving on to our department heads, starting with our attorney.
I'll stick with the agenda unless there's any questions or anything.
Village clerk.
I distributed to the board the renewal proposal for the Exellus, the health insurance. And just to make mention, the co-pay plan went up 8.6%. The high deductible plan increased 6.8%, and the dental plan increased 3%. If you'll, I'll just review that. I did send it to the two unions to review also and to get their input, but I think I'm hoping for either approval at the October 20th meeting or as late as the November 3rd meeting.
Have you heard back from either of the unions?
No, I have not. So, otherwise, I'll stick to the agenda. Thank you.
You're filling in for the treasurer?
No.
Okay.
Not, not this evening.
Then we'll move on to the senior senator.
Just want to mention that the Canton Woods Board did vote support for the 2023 Canton Woods Municipal Budget, and the treasurer was present for that to answer any questions people might have. Baldwinsville Express or Beeville Express Transportation, which gets our folks around to doctor's appointments, lab work, goes to store to the senior center, is in desperate need of drivers. If you're looking for a volunteer opportunity, give Gina a call at the senior center, and she'll be happy to talk with you about volunteering for that program. Want to remind the folks that it's Medicare Open Enrollment right now. It started, it starts on the 15th of October, ends on December 7th. If you want to make a change to your Medicare plan, this is the time to do it. That's something that Nancy Sullivan, the outreach worker, would be happy to help you with, if you just want to give her a call. And one more thing, another flu shot and COVID vaccine clinic happening on October 14th. That's a Friday from 9:00 to 12:00. You do not have to make an appointment or sign up. You do need to bring your insurance card and your COVID vaccine record. And that's it, unless anybody has any questions. Thank you.
Just you. Moving on to Superdinner. Public Works, Mr. McGough.
Winter is slowly approaching here. We'll be, we'll be doing brush pickup now weekly. Leaves will be coming down here, here soon. All the flowers have been taken up, the hangers are up, the small ones are up, the bitches will be coming up soon. The playground and community park is finalized, it's finished. We're going to try to schedule a ribbon cutting here soon. We're looking for Thursday. That project came out really well. We had our forces do quite a bit of it. The Lions Club did their portion. They had some, they had, they helped out quite a bit with that, and we want to do a joint ribbon cutting with them if we can. But that, that looks really nice down there. The landscape, yeah, they came out, came out really good. We had a couple water leaks this, this week. We had one in front of Coal Muffler, minus there. We had another one over on Seneca Street today. It's getting to that time of season, there's, there's more and more water breaks. They've had them all around us, and now we're starting to get them. We also heard confirmation today that we did receive the fluoride grant of $90,000 for the Camp Street rebuild. So that, along with $100,000 for the electrical, talked with the engineer today. We, we need to get some of that, get those bids out. We're hoping by next meeting, we'll have at least electrical parts set out, and hopefully once the bids get out, we accept the bids, we'll be able to get the material, you know, because everything that, it looks like things are loosening up a little bit, but it's still difficult to get anything out. So other than that, we're all set, unless there's questions.
Okay, you mentioned that the tree committee would be going out to look at trees in the next week or so.
Yes, yep.
And I've been on this committee for 17 years. I know the mayor was at some point sometimes. We'd like to invite any other trustees. If you're interested, let Chuck know. We don't know the date, time yet, but usually it's a...
The address is available on next week, and we, we need to get out and do it before the leaves come down.
We scroll around and look at, review the stuff. He seems to have a forester with us that knows the trees inside. It's very beneficial in serving whether a tree is on its last.
We're primarily looking for the device for the takedowns, and he's been, he's been real good two years, for us. John Green.
Okay. Moving on to our codes officer.
I'll just stick with the agenda tonight.
I'm sorry. Trustee Seco was bugging me. Moving on to our police chief.
Trustee's prerogative. As many of you know, I live over in Radisson. I got a text a couple days ago from a neighbor mine who's in the FBI, and she said there were people canvassing the neighborhood, meaning that there was a group of people in the car that were looking for open garage doors, seeing if people were home, trying to distract people, that type of thing, out-of-state plates. Just be vigilant, even if you're in your driveway or in your home. Baldwinsville's community where people have found that they could try and come out here and do things like that. So on my street, I've got myself, an FBI agent, a trooper around the corner, Lieutenant Lockwood lives, and on the Cut Through Street, there's a city police officer. So there's certainly plenty of law enforcement presence, but obviously, the people coming from out of the area don't have any knowledge of that. They don't know when they're in the village, out of the village many times, so just keep that in mind, that that type of thing does occur. As a matter of fact, our officer was dealt today with an individual that we stopped with a vehicle. They found numerous drugs. One of our officers almost got stuck with a hypodermic needle because the people lied about that, that the fact that they had one, and then the person came back, lied about who he was, had no identification, and it wasn't until we fingerprinted him that we realized, in fact, who he was and the warrants for him and things along those lines. And our, our staff talked to, they were blue in the face with him, that "We know you're lying, just tell us because we're going to check your fingerprints, we'll know in half an hour, but still he won't come clean." So those types of things are going on. People come to the community and try and prey on individuals, and I would just ask people to maintain their vigilance because it can happen here. So unless there's questions, that's, that's my comments for tonight.
And as you've always said, close your garage doors, lock your cars.
Yes, absolutely.
Don't make, don't invite people in.
Absolutely. That, that does, I mean, that really does help reduce crime. There's no doubt about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Pending business, there is none. So moving on to new business. Could I have a motion authorizing the mayor to sign the memorandum of agreement with the AFSCME Local 2970 and the New York Council 66, that's the union for the DPW, to increase the hourly rate by $1 per hour of the licensed water and sewage plant operators within the Department of Public Works? This operator must have certification, is that, is that 2B?
2B and D.
2B and GW and D distribution system.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
Just about to two people, currently? There's three now. It is, it is making a difference. We're trying to retain people in that department. And we just had another one of the young, one of the young employees, he stepped up and got his certification also, which I was quite surprised. And it went, went very well, so it's helping.
And the certifications, they have to sign for our water system. They're the people who are responsible.
And it's ongoing. They have to have 30 credit hours every three years. They have to, they have to keep their training out, which a lot of certifications you've got.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
These aren't people that share the towns. Do you have one point? Do you work with...
I did, I ran the town for quite a few years, but you're right, no one's ever been doing that. No, this is just our system.
Item B, discussion, possible motion authorizing the mayor to sign the five-year agreement with the County of Andaga that states that certain planning, zoning, site plan, and subdivision actions are exempt from the Andaga County Planning Board referral requirements of General Municipal Law Section 239-10 and -10.
I'll make a motion.
Second for explanation?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? A request for explanation.
Actually, Greg and I probably explained this.
Greg and Bob might have to explain this one. The county planning board, county planning agency requires that basically any projects that are in front of the planning board and zoning board of appeals that are within 500 feet of a municipal boundary, a state highway, county highway, there may be other stipulations there, but those projects are required to be reviewed by the county planning agency. What this does is it exempts certain smaller impact projects from having to be reviewed by that agency, so...
And we had, they were, we have a piece of paper enumerating. Okay.
So that's what this agreement does, is it allows individuals that are applying for site plan approval for these smaller impact projects to skip that oversight from the county.
And cleans up the whole process.
Just for, just for fun, the 19 Philip Street, if that is something that moves forward, that is not going to be exempt. That is something that would absolutely have to be reviewed by the county.
All right, we can see it's minor subdivisions, up to three. It's setbacks for...
Those types of projects are absolutely reviewed, and, and they look at, even that agency looks at traffic and other impacts like drainage, things like that, so...
I mean, like a minor re-subdivision where you've got, you're combining two lots that somebody has, there's no need for, for that because it basically isn't, even though it's on a, a county highway, there's, there's no need because there's no intermunicipal effect that that would add. So it really cleans up their agenda, too, and makes them a little more efficient at what they're doing.
Is this the first time that this ever has been presented?
No, the last, the last agreement was in 1993. This is just updating it.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't know what happens now, but oh, the mayor's authorized a signing.
Yes.
The mayor's, yeah, the mayor's got to sign two copies, and then they go to the county for the county executive to execute.
Does it affect our local laws at all? Do we have to do anything in our code book?
No.
No? Okay. Good.
And also, as I recall, they, they still will accept if a planning board, for example, on, on a matter where they feel that there is, might be some specific intermunicipal issues, there's nothing to prevent them from filing it and asking for their advice anyway.
Right.
Good. Okay. Item C, motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, October 20th, 2022, at 7:30 p.m. to consider a proposed local law which provides for the election of the village justice in 2023 for a five-year term ending in 2028, which is a general village election date.
I'll move it. So you know, I thought we already did this, but we didn't.
I'll second it.
Second. Do you want to explain it, Dick, or do you want me to ramble on?
I can, you know, several years ago, I was not mayor yet, Joe Sircene was still mayor. We decided to stretch out the village terms to four years from two years and try and get on a cycle where we didn't have an election every year, we had an election every other year, to, you know, save all the hustle and muscle of having an election every March. This way, we had three trustees and a mayor one year, two years later, the other three trustees, and so, so on. In the process, we did not include the judge, even though we intended to, somehow it did not get included. So this year, for instance, is coming here, he will be running all by himself. So it means he has to get petitions on a petition sign, signatures alone. He really theoretically doesn't have any help doing that. He would prefer to be on our election cycle. We would prefer it. We had thought we could extend his term now for another year, and then he'd be up the following year, 2024. Bob has advised us that we can't, we can't do it that way, so the... So the way to do it is extend his current term a year and that would get him to 2028 after he gets elected this year, if, assuming he gets elected. So then he would be on a cycle with three trustees. So that's, that's a long explanation to make it, to just to make it easier for our election process.
It also saves a little, a little bit of money not to run an election constantly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? So be it. Item D is a motion to proclaim Friday, October 14th, 2022 as Baldwinsville Rotary Day. And the mayor's going to read a proclamation.
Yes, he will. Just, just to clarify a thing, because there's no mention of October 14th in the proclamation because that's the night of the banquet that they're having to celebrate the 50th anniversary. So that's the date I picked to make Rotary Day in the village. So here we go. Whereas the Baldwinsville Rotary turns 50 on October 31st, 2022, and whereas the Rotary with motto of service above self is a vital cog in the welfare of Baldwinsville community. And whereas in the 50 years of existence, the Rotary has served meals for senior citizens, provided dictionaries for third grade students, built a pavilion in Lysander Park, picked up litter on highways and park trails, raised thousands of dollars for the hungry and sick, assisted in national and international disaster relief, shared cultures through a youth exchange program, provided dozens of college scholarships and fed elementary children when school was not in session. And whereas the Rotary contributes so much fun to the village as it partners with the Greater Baldwinsville Chamber of Commerce to sponsor the Big Chill, organizes and hosts the Seneca River Days and sponsors the Great Beeville Pizza Roundup to support local pizzerias and raise money to support three local food programs. And whereas, as the Rotary partners with Kiwanis, local churches, individuals who donate and the Baldwinsville Public Library to collect, buy, sort and deliver food for the backpack program, which is active in all the Baldwinsville Public Schools and provides nutritional support for students of all ages. And whereas Rotary volunteers are sure to connect to the community, be introduced to a new network of friends, be provided opportunities for hands-on projects, learn about other cultures and to join a network of 1.4 million Rotarians. Therefore, I, Richard A. Clark, Mayor of the Village of Baldwinsville, do use the powers vested in me by the state of New York to declare October 14th, 2022 as Baldwinsville Rotary Day at the village and salute this fine service organization. There we go.
And there's a proclamation that'll be presented to the Rotary Club on October 14th.
Do you need to approve that, that that is truly the Rotary Day?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Then we need to move into executive session. So I need a motion to move into executive session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.